This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Present tonight are board members Scott Gingold, Beth McLennan, and Violetta Cullen. My name is Matt Rogers, the current chairman, and therefore we have a quorum. Also present from the city zoning department is Melissa Klotz, and Mario Tretto is here from the city attorney's office. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most important, only one person speaks at a time to accurately record the proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After hearing from the applicant or appellant, any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please state your name and address, and be sure to sign up on the sign-in sheet that should be on the lectern. We are audio and video recorded in this space. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. When all of the testimony, evidence, and statements have been received, the board will close the record and begin its deliberations. We usually try to adjourn by 10:30. Any matter not concluded on tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. We do have a full agenda tonight with four items. Is the applicant for 1901 Dempster Street present? They are. The applicant for 711 Emerson, 726 Clark, and 1701 Simpson. I don't see them, but they are at the end of the agenda, so they may be coming a little later. The first matter on our agenda this evening is the approval of our minutes from our March 18th meeting. I had noticed there were a couple of corrections that need to be made. On page three, after the addressing of the standards, we have Ms. Burns as motioning approval and seconding her own motion, which can't happen. I know that's not the way it happened. And then, just to keep her busy, she did the exact same thing in 1901 Dempster Street. So that also needs to be corrected, and I don't know who actually made the motion and who seconded it, but those do have to be corrected.
If I recall, there was one of them where Violetta and I seconded it at the same time, and...
And I think that's the first one.
Yeah.
So I know that we have notes, so it's probably just a typo.
Yeah.
And it needs to be corrected before the minutes are adopted. But were there any other corrections that anyone noticed?
No, that's a sharp eye. I did not notice anything else.
With that, is there a motion to approve our minutes with that correction?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting with that correction that you mentioned.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll note Mr. Gingold is not voting because he was not present at that meeting. So therefore, those meeting minutes are approved, and we will begin with our cases for this evening. The first one on the docket is 1901 Dempster Street, and if I could please have that read into the record.
Starbucks Coffee Company Potential Lessie applies for a special use permit to establish a type-two restaurant, Starbucks, and a drive-through facility accessory at 1901 Dempster Street. 1901 Dempster Street is located in the C2 Commercial District, which requires a special use permit for a type-two restaurant and a special use permit for a drive-through facility. Zoning code section 61043. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include standard use -- special use application submitted February 20, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated July 24, 2012, existing site plan, proposed site plans, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map, and Spark meeting minutes of March 4, 2014.
Thank you. If I could swear in at this time, anyone who will be speaking on this matter, if you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? All right, thank you. If you'd please come up and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Name Yee. I'm the real estate manager for Starbucks.
I'm Scott Goldman with Provision Group on behalf of the property owner.
Thank you. And if you would please tell us about your project.
Go ahead. Great. So this is a conversion of a former KFC, as you mentioned. The existing building footprint isn't being modified. The interior improvements would be demolished and modified in accordance with Starbucks' improvements. The exterior of the building would have various modifications that would be structural to the extent that the roof is likely going to be replaced and repaired. Some of the ephes that's deteriorating would be repaired. The landscaping would be repaired. The parking lot would be repaired. And then some aesthetic modifications that Starbucks can speak to that they've done on stores like this in the past. As I think you guys are aware, we converted a similar former KFC that was about the same size, except for some small variations, in Naperville into a Starbucks that's performing as a drive-through facility now. And it's a beautiful-looking building, significantly approved from these buildings which have been sitting vacant for a number of years.
So we are currently in the process of designing the interior and designing the exterior finishes. So they have not -- our designers have not yet determined what the exterior skin will be, but they will reskin it in some way or make it more attractive than it currently is.
Can you please describe, ma'am, could you please describe the flow of traffic that's expected with the street names?
So the flow of traffic isn't going to vary very much from where it is now. People can enter onto Dodge and go around the backside. If you can see where the cars -- it's two-way ingress/egress off of Dodge, and they'll come in along the north side of the building and then wrap around to the drive-through. So there's a -- you can see on the site plan, there's a bump out of the building where the drive-through window would be, and then they can exit out on Dempster. People can also enter in off of Dempster on the far east end of Dempster and come in and come around the drive-through also.
Is the idea, then, that people could enter or exit on either street, Dodge or Dempster?
Yes.
So people entering on Dodge may potentially be waiting in traffic to make a left turn and cut across the street?
Um...
That'd be people who are heading south?
North.
North?
North.
Yeah.
Potentially, or since that's a signalized intersection, it might be easier for them to turn left at the signal and then turn in from Dempster.
I would agree. That would be -- that would probably take less of a toll on traffic on Dodge.
Correct.
Can you -- do you have any kind of traffic study performed in connection with this particular property?
We have not done a traffic study. I think that because the flow of traffic is fairly easy, this -- the way this outlets or this corner sits, the traffic flows -- like, sometimes we have sites where it really is a pinch point for traffic. I don't perceive there being as much a problem, and that's why we have not done a traffic study here.
Are the cars in the picture that's up on the screen, are those to scale? The cars that are wrapping around the drive-through?
I believe they are. I believe that that is a, you know, five-car stack, if you will.
Also, just to clarify, the zoning ordinance requires stacking of four vehicles for a drive-through, and depending on which ingress is used, you could easily stack seven to nine vehicles, possibly more.
Has there been any discussion with zoning about limiting the -- making perhaps a right turn only, coming out of the Dempster side or out of the Dodge side, or limiting the way traffic goes in so as to minimize the interruption to people turning off of the streets?
The site plan was reviewed at the Site Plan and Appearance Review Committee meeting, which did include a representative from the Public Works Committee who did not feel that there would be any detrimental effect given with the given ingress and egress.
What's the -- sorry. What's the anticipated maximum load of traffic at a -- like, a busy hour? How many cars do you expect to trying to be in line at a given time?
Generally, you know, we have the five-car stacks, and then at the busiest peak, you know, you can have up to eight cars. You know, the flow through the window, we're not making food, we're making coffee. It goes pretty quickly.
I'm familiar with the drive-through Starbucks that's at the corner of Gross Point and Central Street, and I know that there's sometimes problems in that parking lot.
And that is an exceedingly tight stack, as well as there's no parking. They have 15-minute parking. There's eight -- nine parking spaces and three tenants in that building. This is a single-tenant building. It's a totally different layout. That lane is so narrow. It's one of our tightest locations that we have.
How many parking spaces are there going to be for this project?
I think the number is greater than 20 or close to it. I can't...
So 20 cars can park in that lot without affecting the drive-through traffic?
Yes, that's correct.
Ms. Yee, could you explain how the three parallel spaces that are adjacent to the drive-through will work?
So there's a couple of things that can be done. If it starts to -- if that stacking, the wait becomes longer. You know, if somebody's ordering, say, a lot of blended drinks that take longer than the drip coffee drinks, then they can pull alongside there and wait. A lot of times, when you start to get a heavier stack like that, people will just pull into a parking lot and go inside rather than wait for the... So that is an option here, which is an option of the one that you mentioned or referred to. And our hours are from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., likely. Some of our stores open to 10:00, but likely, I think, more than half our stores here in Evanston close at 9:00.
Is there anything unique about this Starbucks menu? I know, I believe some Starbucks serve wine or...
We have very few stores. We only have three stores in the Chicagoland area, and you're lucky enough to have one of what we call the evening stores that serve wine. So that one is open later. And so this would not serve wine. I think it's very close to the high school, so I don't think it would be compatible with that. So this is just a standard Starbucks store with a normal menu.
Just a couple of questions. These are typical questions we ask when we're looking at a special use for a restaurant. You had mentioned that the hours of operation you were proposing were 5:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m.
Right. It could possibly slip to 10:00, but likely will be 9:00.
And that would be for seven days a week?
Correct.
Food deliveries that you get, where will they come and how often will they come?
Unlike a grocery store, you know, our food deliveries are not as frequent. So you may have a small sort of bread-sized truck that will bring our food in or our, you know, dairy products, you know, but it's a very small truck. And then, once a week, we also have our supplies, which would be our paper supplies and trash bags and things like that. And so you generally don't have more than two small -- two trucks a day. One could be a large truck, and one could be a bread truck. And then the supplies truck is usually also a medium-sized truck.
And there are garbage disposal facilities in terms of a dumpster on the lot?
Yes. So there'll be an enclosure, a trash enclosure for our refuge.
And how often do you anticipate pick up?
Part of that is based on volume, so that's generally two to three times a week.
Okay. And then, while we're on garbage, you have been shared the city's litter collection plan, which states that you are responsible for 250 feet around your property for any litter, whether it be yours or not. And you are willing to agree to that plan?
I understand that you have a litter plan. I think it reaches kind of over the top because I will say that I would not be comfortable to tell our employees to go into the middle of the street to pick up trash because I think it's a safety issue. So I would not -- Starbucks probably will not do anything that we feel would put our employees in danger. So we will be a good business citizen, but we will not put employees in danger. So I just want to make that clear.
And that's fine. That's, like I said, that comes from someone outside of us. We have to ask about it. And then the last question is about employees. How many employees do you anticipate...
Anywhere, again, based on volume, between 15 to 20 employees.
At any one time in the...
Oh, no, not at once. So they're in shifts, of course.
Right.
And so there's a morning shift, and then people work evening shifts, and we have a lot of employees who want to just work four to six hours a day for a variety of reasons. So at any given time, you wouldn't have generally more than five or six employees at a time, generally less than that. But maybe at the peak hours, you would have six.
And where do you anticipate them parking if they drive?
So they -- I think there's adequate parking. We have three spaces along the side if that's not used. They would also be in the backside, and typically, in an urban suburban neighborhood like Evanston, we often have employees who take public transportation.
Okay.
That's a very busy corner, and it's central to that neighborhood. We're glad to see a Starbucks come there because it is going to change the impression of it.
Yes, and we're very happy to...
It's been vacant for a long time. Do you anticipate doing anything like outdoor seating?
Yes, we will have a patio area, and I think that the KFC had a patio area, and it's in that front area. You can see the seating that's marked in there. It's where it's very bold in the front of the building. So we'll probably have some sort of low railing of some type to make sure that it's protected in some sense. And no, I'm very hap -- Starbucks and I are both very happy to come to this area. And as I had mentioned to the ZBA, I actually had opened up the Dominics on the south side of the street a number of years ago, too. So I keep coming back to this corner.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just get back into the expected traffic? Did Starbucks conduct any kind of traffic study with respect to the property in deciding whether -- in deciding to locate here?
We did not. We -- Scott presented the site to us, and our real estate team came out and looked at it, and we brought our vice president out of the D.C. area, and we drove the area. And since I'm also very familiar with this, with Evanston, and particularly this corner, having brought other retailers here, everybody agreed that it was a strong intersection, a strong demographic here, and that Starbucks would do well.
Is that typical, that Starbucks would choose a location to open at without looking at data on the traffic?
Well, we certainly looked at the traffic load, but we didn't order a traffic study in that -- that traffic study is usually done where we think the traffic flow could be problematic or be a safety issue.
When you say you looked at a traffic load, can you describe what that is?
Well, just, you know, the traffic counts on both Dodge and Dempster.
Traffic counts by day, by hour?
The average daily traffic counts that are reported on iDOT.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from members of the board? Is there anybody else?
No, I'm sorry. I had one other question. I'm noting in the Spark report that one of the members suggested taking out some of the existing parking for landscaping. Does this plan reflect that, or what was your response or thoughts?
It was my understanding that that was a recommendation, but that was not something we were required to do.
No, it's definitely just a recommendation. I'm just curious as to what...
I think that because of even some of the things that the other members here have brought up, I think we're better off keeping the parking spaces, especially if we think that there's going to be some traffic problems. You want to keep the parking spaces as a potential to carry that overflow.
Okay. Yeah, I actually agree with that.
I may add one thing. There's also additional landscaping actually going in on that interior island, just to the south of the drive-through there. If you see that little triangular piece?
Hmm.
That's not landscaping that currently exists. And just overall, in terms of, I mean, I'm personally, obviously from the ownership side, very appreciative Starbucks involved, but we've been involved with the site for a number of years. We've got a relationship with Yum! Brands. We purchased several buildings from them. And as I think you guys are all aware, this was a very difficult deal to consummate because Yum! Brands restricts their properties from certain uses. And the logical uses for this sort of property are food service uses, which they restrict. They don't want anyone who could be remotely competitive to Yum! In fact, McDonald's offered them millions more than we paid for the property in exchange for them. They declined to sell to them. The site also has some environmental history. It was a gas station. It makes it challenging, right? So there's a significant investment being made by property ownership and by Starbucks above and beyond what a normal store opening would require. So it's a significant vote of confidence in the neighborhood and the area on both parties.
How long is the Starbucks lease, proposed lease?
You can put it in there?
It's a 10-year lease, and we have four- or five-year options beyond that. So the intent is to stay here for a very long time. And our operations, I talked to them about it, and all of our operations, people are excited to add this store. And this would be -- we already have six stores in Evanston. So -- but we don't have any representation really on the west side of Evanston, and so we're happy to be here.
Other questions from the board? If not, is there anyone else here this evening who wishes to speak to us on this matter? If not, I'll ask Ms. Yee if she just has anything she'd like to say in summation.
I just want to thank the zoning board and the city to allow us to come here and open a new, yet another Starbucks in Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Before we go through the standards, we have a number of standards that we must find are met before we can make a positive recommendation to city council on this matter. But I will ask if there are any general comments from members of the board before we do that.
Just as a general comment, obviously, I'm excited that there's a proposed project for this space, and in particular for this neighborhood. I think that will have a very positive impact on the neighborhood, and it's always good for the city to be making use of space that's vacant. I do have a concern about the traffic turning off of Dodge across the street. I think it's less of a concern turning off of Dempster because, if I am imagining the property right, correctly, I don't think that the -- I don't think people would naturally make a turn across the street on Dempster, but I think Dodge potentially poses a significant problem. And my personal feeling is that whatever recommendation we make to city council be with some sort of recommendation that city council either request a traffic study or consider limiting turns across the street into the drive-through as opposed to from the direct lane abutting the property.
I agree with that because when KFC was there, there was always a lot of traffic right there. It's a very confusing corner. It's extremely busy, especially at rush hour. It does need a traffic study. It needs -- because McDonald's, they turned there as well, off of Dempster. It's confusing when you're there because on both sides of the street are retail. It'd be good to have, like, you know, some definite look at it before we put another business in over there.
I'm going to ask a question that you probably don't know the answer to. Because of the fact that we have had a number of businesses in this area moving, coming in, going out, has anyone conducted, looked at traffic overall in the past couple of years, in the past year?
The Public Works Department frequently looks over changes in traffic patterns throughout the city. I'm not aware of this particular case, but they are aware of the changing trends in the community, so I would believe that they would be aware of it.
I think it's perfectly fine to make a recommendation to council that they at least investigate traffic. As we know, sometimes our recommendations to council are heated and sometimes they are not when we get into the specifics. Was there anything else that anyone had particular concerns about, or... If not, we will go through the standards, and as I mentioned before, all of these standards must be found to be met for us to make a positive recommendation for city council. First of the standards is the requested special use is on the list of special uses in the zoning ordinance. The applicant is applying for a special use for a type-two restaurant and for a drive-through facility, both of which we find are in the C2 Commercial District, which is what this property is located in. I will also note that all around it is commercial and industrial space. Everything near it is zoned industrial and commercial. So that standard has been met. The requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance. One of the things that the Comprehensive General Plan is concerned with is making sure that we are redeveloping vacant storefronts and keeping our commercial properties in our commercial corridors. And we discovered that this property, being along Dodge and Dempster, has two major streets that serve it, as well as, as I mentioned before, it being in a commercial zone. So I believe that this standard also has been met. Number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood. There has been some discussion on traffic and whether that would cause a negative cumulative effect. My personal feeling is that it isn't going to. I think that by asking council to look into whether a traffic study should be conducted or not, will address any concerns that any of the other board members may have. So I would believe that this standard has been met. Number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Again, we're looking at redeveloping a vacant storefront, which has nothing to -- nothing but good impact on the neighborhood, especially a company as respected as Starbucks, a national chain, that has a good history of being a good citizen neighbor. And so I believe that this standard also has been met. Number five, the requested special use can be adequately serviced by the public facilities and services. The fact that this is -- was a restaurant, a type-two... The fact that this is, was a restaurant, a type-two restaurant previously, I don't believe that there is anything that this type of development will cause an undue burden upon the public facilities that are in place. So this standard has been met. Number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. Again, I will just kind of reiterate what I said before, that if we go forward with a positive recommendation and ask City Council to investigate traffic, that is, that is their right to do so or to also not do so. But I believe that that standard has been met. Number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. This building, to my knowledge, has no specific, significant historical or architectural details which would need to be preserved. So I believe this standard has been met. Number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural resources and environmental features. Again, we're in the middle of a commercial district. There is landscaping that is around. There are beds for planting, and the applicant has mentioned that they actually are increasing the number of plantings on the property. So I believe that this standard has been met. And number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. Because of the fact that this will be a food service facility, they will be required to get whatever licensing they need through the city for that. But we have no reason to believe that this applicant would be in any violation of any ordinances that the city of Evanston would impose. With that, does everyone agree with my findings on the standards?
I agree.
Yes.
With that, there are some specifics that we usually include with our recommendation to City Council. Number one being the hours of operation. The applicant has mentioned 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. Is there typical hours of operation? Is that something, do we ever go larger than that? Would we do till midnight because of the commercial nature of this, just so that it's there? If they should ever decide to go to 10:30, they don't have to come back to us?
Given the extensive area of the commercial district, I think 11 or 12, 11:00 p.m. or midnight would be acceptable.
I would recommend that we allow operations then to midnight. Again, not that you have to operate until midnight, it just gives you a larger window so that if there would be any fluctuation in the hours. And then also, we usually, we had some discussion on the litter collection plan, but we usually include that in our recommendation as a condition. And then also, if we would want to make a recommendation to Council to ask for a traffic study of the, of the intersection in question. So with that, is there a motion from someone on the board?
I'll move in the matter 14ZMJV-0009 regarding the property at 1901 Dempster Street that we recommend to City Council that they approve the requested special use on the following conditions. One, that the city, that the council request or investigate on its own the, the impact of the business, proposed business on traffic on the, on the adjacent streets, Dodge and Dempster, particularly during peak hours, which I'm assuming are going to be in the morning when Evanston high school students and Evanston commuters are going to be driving through that area. Second, that the hours of operation be limited from 5:00 a.m. until midnight. Third, that the business comply with the city, city's litter collection plan and garbage plan to the extent that safety is not compromised. And last, that the property be developed and the business carried out consistent with the testimony and documents and the record.
Is there a second of the motion?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion will move forward to City Council with a recommendation of aye, four to zero. Good luck with your project and good luck with Council. The second matter on the agenda for this evening is for 7-Eleven Emerson Street. If that could please be read into the record.
Adam Wilmot, architect, applies for major zoning relief to convert a single-family residence into a two-family residence with three open parking spaces. The applicant requests to construct two open parking spaces that are not within 30 feet of the rear property line, where open parking is only permitted within the rearmost 30 feet of the property. Zoning code section 6463B18. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are a variance application submitted March 5, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated November 26, 2013, existing site plan, proposed site plans, elevations, preservation certificate of appropriateness dated March 18, 2013, letter of objection, image of property, aerial views of property, zoning map of property, Spark draft meeting minutes of March 19, 2014, as well as an updated site plan that I passed out to members at the beginning of the meeting that displays the pervious area as recommended by Spark and the Preservation Commission.
Thank you. If I could have anyone who feels that they may want to make any statements on this matter, please be sworn at this time by raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. Mr. Wilmot, if you would step up, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Adam Wilmot. I represent Wall &amp; Gomez Architects, 7-Eleven South Dearborn, Chicago. Here to discuss the property at 7-Eleven Emerson in Evanston.
Thank you. If you would please tell us about the project.
The existing building is a single-family home. The current owner desires to convert this into a two-family dwelling. In order to do that and comply with parking requirements, they are required to provide three parking spaces on the property. Because the building, the existing building, is protected by landmarks, there are no options for removing an existing part of the building or altering it in any major way to create an enclosed parking on the site. Additionally, when we went through landmarks, they consider a, there's a very large tree. It's represented by a large black dot to the northwest of the, the building on that site plan. That tree was determined to be a significant piece of the historic nature of the property, meaning that landmarks would disagree or perhaps disapprove of its removal. In order to preserve the tree, which is also greatly desired by the present owner, we have arranged three parking spaces in diagonal formation around the tree. And in order to continue feeding the tree through, you know, a natural water, we are presenting a solution that would provide permeable pavement or pervious pavers for the driveway. Other alternatives were investigated for this particular property. We looked at putting three parking spaces directly behind the existing structure. In order to do that, one, we would have had to remove the tree. Second, we would have been here requesting a rear yard setback, variance of, I think it was approximately 10 inches. All other options that we look at are, create difficult scenarios to back out around the tree or require the removal of the tree, or would require some sort of alteration to the building, none of which are truly possible. The only other option available would be to keep it as a single-family residence, which would still have required two parking spaces. If we were to look at doing that with a enclosed garage, which is one of the other options that were looked at, we again endanger the tree because you'd be installing foundations beneath your garage, you'd be cutting through the, the root structure of the tree. So we feel that this current solution is in the best interest of preserving the property in its current state. Should also be noted that, though it's not shown on this site plan, it should be shown on the site plan that was distributed to you today, there is significant landscaping that is being proposed as screening, both at the front of the property and at all sides of the parking. That is proposed to be a two-to-three-foot-high shrub to at least aid in screening of the, the open parking.
Is the property owner here tonight?
She is not. She is days from giving birth.
Okay. Can you, can you describe, in the packet, it states that the property owner is an LLC by the name of 7-Eleven EME. Can you describe what that entity is and what its business is?
They're a property management company. She's a private owner of a number of properties in the Evanston and northern suburbs.
So does, do I take that to mean that this is being converted to, to, the request to convert this to a two-family residence is so that it can be rented to two families?
Correct. It is not the intent of the owner to occupy the building.
How many, how many open parking spaces are on the property currently?
Legally, I think one, because that would be the existing parking pad at the rear of the property that's proposed for removal. However, there are six spaces that had been leased by the previous owner. There's some history to this property in which I believe the previous owner made a deal of some sort with a construction crew that was working at Northwestern to dump a sizable amount of gravel onto the side yard of this property. I don't know if that's in your packet. It was presented to Preservation. There are aerial views of the, the property in its current condition that shows what's there right now. But for at least the last several years, which is my understanding, there have been six parking spaces leased by the previous owner.
Is the property currently occupied?
No, the property is currently actually under construction to repair, do extension, extensive foundation work. The property itself was extremely dilapidated when the present owner took it over. I'll note that the, the present owner has a passion for historic preservation, making sure that some of these houses are not torn down, or in this case, likely would have fallen down. When she took it over, there was a, a hole in the roof, extensive rotting throughout the exterior wall. Foundation was in dire disrepair. So as a matter of shoring up the, the building, she has at risk, taken it on herself to get a foundation-only permit to begin repair. So as is present, the only parking happening there is by construction vehicles who are working on the house.
And is there, to your knowledge, I mean, I realize we're not asking the owner, to your knowledge, is there some reason why the property can't be fixed up and remain a single-family or single-residence property and not require additional parking spaces?
None that they have expressed to me. I don't know that I'm qualified to actually answer the question. I would imagine the, the easiest explanation would be that there's a significant investment going into the property to salvage it. And I'm sure in their personal research, they've determined that a two-family is more lucrative as a rental property in this particular location.
I assume that's also the same rationale.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they're looking at it as this is the only way to fund the work that, the amount of money that they're going to put into it, that a single-family wouldn't give them enough return to make the kind of significant investment into the property that is required in order to keep it standing.
Do you know whether they considered either fixing the property or knocking down the structure and building a new one for sale to a new owner?
I don't think this particular owner would ever have considered knocking it down. Like I said, she has a, a passion for preservation work. She does a lot of this type of work in the northern suburbs. And she looked at this property in particular because it was dilapidated by a landmark. So I would say no, they have probably never considered tearing this down. It likely would have been less expensive.
What, what was the property being used for, by the previous owner? Do you?
I have only had a very short discussion with the previous owner, but nobody was living there. Nobody was renting it. It was essentially a vacant building, at least during the very short period of time that I was in the building prior to its sale.
Which was, I noticed that there was, the deed was, it was in November of last year? Is that when the?
That sounds correct.
Sale was finalized?
Yeah, it's fairly recent.
So you're saying for the two to three months prior to that, you didn't, to your knowledge, there wasn't anybody living in there?
Correct. The earliest that I've been in that building would have been October to do some preliminary field investigation, due diligence for the owner prior to sale. And it was clear that that building had been vacant for a very, very long time.
Okay, thanks.
Long enough that it had gone into disrepair. As I mentioned, there was a, a sizable hole in the roof. There was water that had been draining through the entire inside of the house, along the exterior wall. There were areas of bathrooms that were completely unsafe to even occupy.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for the zoning department and perhaps Council. What, what is the exact issue that the zoning board is being asked to weigh in on? Is it the conversion to a two-family residence, or is it just strictly the location of the parking spaces?
The conversion to a two-family residence is permitted as of right, but because there is a small addition included to the building, that triggers the parking requirement, which for two dwelling units is three spaces. So the variance required is for the two spaces that are not entirely within the rearmost 30 feet of the property.
So you're saying that the, if, looking at the site plan, the diagonal parking spot farthest to the north is within setback?
Yes, that's, that space is entirely compliant.
Sorry, so follow-up question to my other question, which is, so if this owner were not seeking to convert to a two-family residence, there would not be a three-parking-space requirement, and the project would be in compliance as-is?
It would be legal nonconforming. A single-family dwelling is required to have two parking spaces, so they would be legal nonconforming by having the one existing open parking space rather than two.
So what is the, what is the addition? Is that the enclosure of the porch on the east side of the house?
Yes, that is correct. It's a, a small area shown hatched in on the right side of the building.
Right. That area is currently, I'm sorry, that area is currently semi-enclosed. It's a screened-in porch. The second floor of the building already overhangs to that point. Essentially, the, the plan is to enclose it and keep it weather-tight so that it can be occupied seasonally.
Mr. Wilmot, the, the west side of the property that, where the proposed driveway would be immediately adjacent to, what's, I, I don't see anything noted on the site plan. Is there some sort of fencing or any kind of retaining wall, anything like that, that would go along the, the property line?
No, no retaining wall would be required here, and no fencing has been proposed. I don't know that the owner would for any reason be objecting to that type of a measure, though I would imagine Landmark would then have, have a say as to whether or not they felt something like that would be appropriate here.
What, can you describe the property to the west?
The property to the west is a multi-unit dwelling. It's an apartment building.
The reason I asked, I see in the packet, there's a letter, an objection to the project due to the driveway being so close to the property line and kind of impending on uses of the backyard of the adjacent property. So that's why I'm suggesting, I guess I'm... So, that's why I'm suggesting, I guess I'm, I didn't suggest, now I'm suggesting that perhaps some sort of fencing to sort of separate that driveway might be desirable.
Again, I don't think that the owner would have any objection to the installation of a fence to separate the two properties. Should be noted that existing condition is a gravel driveway, so I'm sure they're getting quite a bit of gravel that's running off onto their property. Obviously, the proposal is to significantly improve that situation through permeable pavement, which would not only stop that situation, I mean, you'd have a cleaner division between the property. We would certainly be able to ensure that water runoff, stormwater runoff is being contained on-site, as would be required by MOPD.
I have a question. Is, where the gravel driveway is, and the reason I'm asking this is because I'm seeing two images that are sort of contradicting each other in our packet. Is there a strip of grass that runs along the side of 717, the property that's to the west? It's on page 70 in our packet.
Certainly looks like it. There's a...
In this, in this, it's hard to see any grass running along the side of the property, but on the page just above it, preceding page, which is more at street level, it appears that there is maybe a five-foot-wide strip of grass there. So, I'm taking, I take it that...
I'm sorry, you're talking about the, the west side of where you see those cars parked?
Yes.
That would be the adjacent properties.
Right, but is there a strip of grass there, is what I'm asking?
Yes, there is existing grass there, and it is on the adjacent property.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Wilmot? If not, I know there are some other people who wish to speak to us on this matter. So, Mr. Wilmot, if you'd like to have a seat, I'm going to let some of the neighbors speak, ask questions, express their issues, and then you will have a chance to make a summation at the end.
Thank you.
So, if the first gentleman would like to speak, and if you could begin by stating your name and address, please.
Yes, sir, I'd like to, first of all, make sure I'm on the record here.
Oh, okay.
I have printed record. I'm Marshall Chappell. I live at 1910 Orrington. And my backyard abuts the property at issue on the north. I first had some questions, and one is that it's unclear to me, looking at the diagram on the notice we got, and I think also on what's been projected, what the location would be of the two open parking places.
If I could ask you to pull the microphone a little bit closer to you, thank you.
It's, it's unclear to me what the, what space would be occupied by the two open parking places. Right now, as I count it, there's three, and so this would be a diminution by one. And so, I'm trying to visualize because I'm not real good at diagrams, just how it's going to look.
My understanding is that we are looking at three open parking spaces for the two living units. So, if we go to this space here, and I'll turn off the light so you can see it a little better, it's the three diagonal spaces up near the black dot, which represents the cottonwood tree.
Tree, that's the cottonwood.
Yes.
Well, I can only tell you, as a neighbor who is in the backyard a fair amount, that I don't think I have ever had the sense that there have been vehicles as far north as parking place one as it's designated here, or probably even parking place two. My sense of it, and it is a sense, is that whatever vehicles are parked there are parked south of the north end of the building. And so, I think that the proposal, if implemented, works a serious change in the aesthetics, and I'm afraid I'm captured by my training as a lawyer, the use and enjoyment of my property. So, so that's, I suppose, more a comment than a question at this point, but that is of concern to me. I also, not being a biologist and certainly not a tree person, an arborist, I'm skeptical that putting the parking places where they're designated here would be any good for what we're told is one of the oldest cottonwood trees in, in Evanston. There is a third point, which is a question that may morph into a comment, and that has to do with numbers of people. And I guess to put the comment directly, that although I am pleased that this property is apparently destined for occupancy, and to answer Ms. McClellan's question, it is a fact that for many years, I think, that that property has not been occupied. And we've always wondered about that, and I think we would welcome at least certain kinds of occupancy. But my concern, and this is projecting a future I don't know anything about, is that what we may be getting is possibly transient groups of people, e.g., students, who will be coming in and out, that they will not lend stability to what has been a fairly stable neighborhood. So, I think I've probably made two of my main comments. One is that I'm not thrilled about two families. Another is that it seems to me that the parking places now, as proposed, are going to impinge on our property significantly more than the use of this property for vehicles has been. And I suppose that if I had my druthers, I'd have those cars being parked near Emerson Street, where they would not adversely affect neighbors, or traffic, or anything like that. So, I guess I, I guess that's the main points that I'd like to make.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Chappell? All right. I saw a couple of their hands.
I'm Helene Chappell. I also live at 1910 Orrington, which is the northern border boundary with the, with this property. Can I just ask a question first?
Yes.
What is the Evanston code? How does it define family?
Could you, could you step back just a moment?
As in, two-family? Is it all those related by blood and marriage, or is it any group that acts as a family, such as they eat together and they share their resources, their money?
I'm going to ask our council to please advise us on that. I know it's been a topic of discussion in the city of Evanston.
Was it resolved?
I, I don't know, to be quite honest with you, which is why I'm going to, to ask someone who's a little more knowledgeable than I.
Let me do some research, then I'll get back to you with, with the...
All right, thank you.
Just as, as a quick point, the definition has not recently changed, so it is the related by blood or marriage acting as a family, or no more than three unrelated persons. And that would not change regardless of how many dwelling units are on the property. That definition is per dwelling unit.
So, it's, I'm sorry, it's those related by blood or marriage, and not more than three unrelated?
Or not more than three unrelated.
Or not more than three unrelated. The ands and the ors. Okay. Because we are concerned about the numbers that are going to come in, that has been, it was a single-family home. It's a Victorian house, very dilapidated, because the previous owner had done nothing. It had been left vacant for, oh, many, many years. And that one of, our concern is, as my husband said, the stability of the neighborhood. It's a very interesting, it's a very fragile part. We tried to keep it stable, to anchor Orrington Avenue, for the, to keep it the glory, that it has, not so glorious down at our end, but to keep it the important street that it has always been in Evanston. And we have been concerned, first about the numbers, that we're going to go in there. I'm a little less concerned now with that definition of family. But we have been concerned about the parking situation. And anything, any variance that would move any of the parking toward Emerson, move it south, and away from that northern border, is very, is very important. Moving it toward Emerson would disadvantage, would not be a detriment to anybody there. People walking past Emerson would be past it in about five seconds. But backed against our boundary, it would be intrusive every day, all day along. There is construction going there now, some of them park back toward our fence, and it has been intrusive. We would get more car lights, we will get more fumes, we will get more engine noise than there, than there is now. And I cannot, you cannot overestimate the impact of the cottonwood, first of all, there are two cottonwood trees. There was the, the black circles there, and there's another one very close by, closer to, Diane, was it closer to the western side than that one? And then one, one over, that are very old, they are very large. They are very dominating presence on that property and, and the surrounding properties. They shade my backyard, so I can't plant anything that requires sun, but I love them anyway. And anything in that, to move any of the parking away from those trees would be very, very important. We would like even to get some kind of, if it requires a variance, to have just two cars parked, parking for two cars in that area. There is street parking for residents. It's not a question that they will not be able to park on the street with a residence sticker. There has never been a problem of residents being able to park on the street. With two parking, two cars there rather than three, the third car would be able to park. It would not be an inconvenience for them. There is residential parking right on Emerson Street, right, right in the front. So, that is, that is our concern, and it is a very important concern for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to ask you to come to the microphone real quick. Before I let you speak, Mr. Chappell, I believe council has the definition of a family or who's allowed to live in a dwelling unit.
Just with respect to two-family residence, just a point of clarification, it just says residential building containing not more than two dwelling units entirely surrounded by open space on the same lot, which focuses just particularly on the dwelling units itself and not on the definition of family, whereas it might otherwise in other portions of the city code. But with respect to zoning, it just focuses on the two-family units within one building.
I'm not sure I understand what you're telling me.
The, so, whereas, you know, other portions of the, I know I'm actually working on something else, where family is being defined with respect to this portion of the zoning code, where it says two-family residence, the definition just focuses on two units. It's not, it doesn't focus entirely, it doesn't have any...
But it doesn't give the definition of what consists of a fam, or what a family consists of?
No, yeah, there's no definition with what a family consists of, but with respect to the building itself and what they're trying to obtain, it's just the structure that it focuses on. The fact that it has two units and not, there is no focus on the family or family living in it.
I know somewhere within zoning, or not, maybe not in zoning...
It is within the zoning ordinance. If you go a little further to, to family, there is a, an extensive definition in there. I, I gave the gist of it.
So, I'll let you continue there. We will go back.
Just an addendum about the potential character of the residents. And here, I'm referring again to the specter of students, and I'm pointing out that some years ago, we had an open file that was called Noise Ordinance. And fortunately, the university responded to our complaints about that, but my concern, again, not knowing who the residents of this building are going to be, but assuming that there may be six students in there, that I'm concerned about the prospect of stereos blaring north. And that is another, one of the concerns that mixed in here about use and enjoyment.
Thank you. I believe there was one other resident who wanted to speak, maybe two. I thought I saw a hand over here. So, if you'd come up, please, and state your name and address for the record.
I'll try to get here in the right position for the microphone. Is that...
That's fine.
Is that working? I'm Diane Corling, D.I.A.N.E., last name K.O.R.L.I.N.G., and let's see if I can write while talking. 1914 Orrington. The property there that Professor Chappell and Professor Chappell occupy is 45 feet wide, I believe. My property is 45 feet wide, the north to the south direction, and I am just beyond a fence to their north. From my kitchen window, I look out towards that black dot, which is one of the tallest cottonwood trees you're likely to see, one of the tallest cottonwood trees you're likely to see. Now, if you want to get a sense of statistics, drive by and take a look. You can see both of them. The use and enjoyment of my backyard has been somewhat modified by the presence of these trees, but never been bothered by any of the occupants of that building. I have pictures of the late Professors Constance and George Cohen, who were the owners and occupants prior to Jim McGuire buying it, who sold it eventually to the applicant for whom Mr. Wilmot is the architecture representative.
If I could interrupt you real quickly.
Yeah.
When did the Cohens live there?
I brought pictures to the preservation meeting a couple of weeks ago.
If you can tell me roughly the years.
I, I moved in in 1978, and they were there. And I am quite, I am kind of surprised that in the extensive information available here in the city, that the history is sort of conjectural, from, from the standpoint of what this board has been given to work with. So, I will add my conjecture. When do you think they passed away? Maybe 10 or 11? Yeah, Connie Cohen had an art show at the Smithsonian in Washington, DC, but died of... Connie died first, and then George moved. He was a professor of art.
I'm trying to find out about how long, how long the building was vacant.
What you don't see is the searching, searching, searching signal as I talk here. What you don't see is the searching, searching, searching signal as I talk here.
I think they were there for about 10, 10, 15 years. They said it 15 years ago.
So, so somewhere between 1988 and 1993 is when they.
And the property records would show the time that Jim McGuire, James McGuire, purchased it from their estate.
Now, did he live in the unit, or did he live in the house? So the house sat empty roughly from the death of the Cohens or when they moved out until it was acquired roughly in November?
And I think it may have been empty as long as 15 years. Mary McWilliams of the Preservation, I'll say, Commission or Cadre at any rate, several other people, including our first board alderman, were aware of the death of the Cohens and there was a sale there. I still can't tell you, but maybe.
That's fine. I was just trying to, I was trying to figure out time-wise.
Between 10 and 15 years.
All right, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Please.
In the meantime, those big trees indeed have been changing the use and enjoyment of my property. I don't have vegetables able to ripen in the backyard, but it's very pleasant. Those trees provide shade and in the storm conditions, which the winds of the last 48 hours have given us a reminder again, they are, I'm glad to know that the owners are going to take, will take care of and be trimming those. They are, they're, we've become used to them. And I don't think I want to use the legal term reliance, but I have come to rely on the fact that they are big trees there and I have shade in the yard and the shade is wonderful. It's the potential destruction of those trees, in fact, that concerns me. And Mr. Wilmot has explained his understanding of permeable pavement. Any excavation to install anything very much deeper might disrupt those roots. I think even for the, the people who have bought and those who may occupy the house in question, the trees are a great benefit. They're delightful, they're historical, and I hope that the requirements for parking are managed by maybe another look of city officials, the forestry department, with respect to the particular life histories and characteristics of the cottonwood species and the kind of disruption that can be tolerated so that we don't give with the one hand and take away with the other, adding even permeable parking and destroying a couple of trees which have become a fixture of the neighborhood. I'm less worried about branches blowing off in the wind than I am about the destruction of those trees as the development proceeds. And as to fencing, there is an existing fence not mentioned. I've got a lot of pictures on here if anybody has the leisure to look, but there is an existing open fence, what used to be called rabbit fence. It keeps small animals from going through the top, but it lets light, air, rain, and even a view come on through. And I think a solid fence at the back of this property might be detrimental to the vegetation growing very nicely on the Chappell's backyard. Use and enjoyment, public safety, you've got a lot of things to think about, but the, those three parking spaces coming closer to my friends who play croquet in the backyard with their grandson, hit a few tennis balls, we all sit out in the backyard and eat. My last picture that I would have showed was George and Connie Cohen and some guests there sitting in my backyard in the shade of their trees. Having something that looks like the back of a parking lot, I'm not going to moon you, but something with a bunch of vehicles, I guess it'll be their front ends, suddenly invading what has been the center of a completely residential backyard is going to be, yeah, we're going to wish that hadn't happened.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Corling? There not being any. Was there anybody else who wished to speak to us on the matter? If not, Mr. Wilmot, you are allowed to ask any questions you might want to ask of people who have, who have testified, make any closing statements that you might have.
Thank you for that opportunity. I'll address, I guess, some of the comments that were made. I actually think this is a very good compromise based on what I'm hearing from the neighbors. We by right could park within a couple feet of the rare property line, so we're, we're moving ourselves, I believe it's about seven and a half, it's 10 feet or so from the, the rare property line, significantly further than what you are allowed to park at by right. If we were to do a two parking space configuration, we'd be pulling straight into the rear of the property, headlights pointed due north at the neighboring backyard and would likely be within three feet. We wouldn't do an enclosed garage, I mean, that would be the other option, but for reasons that I mentioned earlier, enclosed garage would be certain death to the large cottonwood tree. The other cottonwood tree, just for point of record, I'm fairly certain is at the northeast corner of the, the property. My, I, I believe it's a northeast corner, so it's, it's quite a ways away from where we're, we're parking. I'd also note that the tree is significantly old. The, the root structure likely extends well beyond anywhere that we're putting or proposing parking. The root structure likely extends into neighboring yards. So the proposal of permeable pavement, now again, allows 20%, minimum 20% permeability, that's a requirement of the city. It's hard to find anything that really goes much beyond that. You get up to maybe 30%, but we believe that that is going to be enough to preserve the health of the tree. The owner is actively working with a professional arborist. They have their own concern about the tree's health because it sits directly next to the property that they're putting a very significant investment into. They need to make sure that the tree isn't dying and the branches don't go crashing through the roof, which I would suggest is the likely cause of the existing hole in the roof when they purchased it was probably the, a branch. In terms of the, you know, maintenance of the property or who moves in there or who lives there, if it is a transient group like students, I would note that this particular property owner owns a number of properties throughout Evanston. I've been to many of them and they are all well-kept. She is a good property manager. So while the, the people may be coming and going who are living there, the people taking care of the property are very serious about taking care of the property and do a very nice job. Beyond that, you know, I, I think again, the, the proposed location of, of the, the parking, what we're looking to do is create a compromise. We're not looking to create a situation where we're putting more people out on the, the street to park, even though it is a residentially zoned parking area. We believe that it's in the best interest to always try and comply as best as you can, at least with the parking requirement. We looked at this as the, I guess, most sensitive proposal in terms of what type of relief that we would be looking for. And we have done this with consideration to, to the neighbors' enjoyment and use of their property. That's all. Thank you for your consideration.
Any additional questions for Mr. Wilmot?
I want, I don't have a question for Mr. Wilmot right now, but I don't want to close until I make a comment, sort of throw out a thought that I'm having.
Well, now would be the time to do so.
Exactly. So it seems to me that we're running up against the zoning setback requirements because everything that I'm hearing from the tree to the backyard to the side yard of 77717 that is apparently used for picnicking by the tenants of 717, all of that is pointing to the problem that putting those parking places in the northwest corner of the yard, everyone dislikes that. There's just as much room to put three parking places in the southwest corner of the yard, but then we get into the problem of front yard parking. But that's, to me, that's the obvious solution here. Emerson's pretty, it's not commercial there, but it's not exactly residential either. It's institutional. So anyway, that's my comment. I'm curious to hear if anyone here tonight has any.
I will just make a comment and I'm going to ask a question to everyone because in the one photograph, there were two additional trees along the west side of the house, if I was seeing it correctly. Are both of those still there?
Yes, and none are proposed for removal.
So there would be two trees in the area that you are proposing, I would think.
Well, they're both in front of the house, so I'm not sure precisely where you're recommending other parking.
I think that's the only place that there would be.
I'm talking, I'm talking about, I'm looking at the street view picture in the packet. And I'm talking about basically having diagonals cut in approximately where the van that's facing out to street is, yeah, can we get that for everybody here to look at? And perhaps they'd have to do the same kind of cutting in and out and, and avoiding the existing tree as they're proposing to do in the back, but if the backyard tree is the significant tree, is the tree of note, then I'm a lot more comfortable with getting way, way up under the drip line of the trees in the front yard than this highly historic significant tree in the backyard. I mean, permeable pavement or not, you're getting up under the tree's drip line, you're causing problems.
I just did a quick little, it's not a scientific study, it's a drawing of lines on a blank piece of paper to measure how big those three parking spaces are and moving them in front of the little four-foot.
Right.
Jump out there on the, on the west side. And that would literally take it from the south end of where the building juts out there to the property line.
Yeah.
So I don't think that, that it would be possible to fit three parking spaces into that. They would literally be in the side front yard.
So keep parking space three where it is. I'm just saying perhaps we could make a recommendation that we kind of go against zoning and move those parking places, shift them all a little bit further south. That, that's the only thing. I mean, the particulars would have to be worked out. I'm not saying that they, all three of them have to be in the front, but getting away from that, getting away from the tree and getting away from that northeast corner seems to me like it would satisfy a lot of the issues that are getting raised here tonight.
May I make a comment?
Sure, that's why I didn't want to close the record.
Okay, thank you. I'm not terribly familiar with, with the procedure of, you know, between landmarks and, and the ZBA. But I would like to note that we did go to landmarks with a different proposal before this one was approved, in which we did show, while this was additional parking, we had a, I believe a fourth and a fifth space on the lot, they were closer to the, the front of the property. And landmarks was, or Preservation Commission was discouraging us from parking closer to the, the street front.
And what was the reason given? We don't have a copy of the, the preservation meeting in the packet.
Simply that they felt it was out of character with the property.
My feeling, no.
I mean, the reality of just having a car parked in front of a historic home was unappealing to them. The further back that we could push them was, you know, that was their recommendation, was to reduce actually to four parking spaces. We reduced to, to three instead, but still pushed things as far back as, as we reasonably thought we could.
Sure.
If I could ask you to.
Okay, want to give her the?
You could, you can hold on to the handheld if you would like to have a discussion.
It's dangerous to give law professor a microphone.
I have a gavel, though. I think that usually quiets them if necessary.
No, I don't want to dispute that, but how you described Emerson Street over there is, is perfectly accurate. It, it's quite institutional across the street, not on this side. And there is an apartment house, the one, the one to the west. So I think that the Commission's concerns about moving cars up towards the, to the south toward Emerson Street, I, I just don't think they were looking at the street the way that they should have. I think you are looking at it the way it should be looked at.
Takes an urban planner to do that.
Oh. And, and the, as I think I said before, the pedestrians are walking. Well, first of all, there is nothing on that block that has parking on this, on the site. We're all in the alley or people park on the street, or they park in some other location. But pedestrians walking by are walking by there in five seconds. And the parking moved further up toward Emerson couldn't really disturb them at all, but it's an enormous disturbance as you get to the private homes that are up on the northern, on the northern side.
Can I, just for clarification, of the three proposed spaces, it's actually the space that's closest to the north property line, to the Chappell's home, that is legal, that we're not seeking a variation for, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so just for the neighbors to understand, the, the, one alternative that apparently was considered and that would be conforming, assuming that there's not a side yard problem, would be to have all, two cars or both cars even closer to your property line than the, than the way it's configured now and proposed.
If I have a choice, I'm supporting that configuration, which would move the parking to the south, inappropriate, and away from the, that's a fair way to approach it.
Just so that I might clarify, the owner would have no objection to moving the parking closer. I'm speaking on, you know, not knowing the procedure, I'm speaking out of concern for my client that if.
Right, you don't want to get.
Were to make a recommendation that we move the parking closer, that we would then somehow be negating the certificate of appropriateness.
Right.
That we've received and that we would then have to go back, possibly be denied.
Right, I understand. No, you don't want to get into some sort of ping pong situation where you're just.
Correct.
That's fair.
One option that you would have is if you are amenable to the parking spaces being closer to the street, that the zoning board not make a determination tonight and allow you to go back to the Preservation Commission with a revised plan. And if they, if the Preservation Commission does approve it, then you can come back here and get your final approval so that you wouldn't have to start anything over from scratch.
Although it certainly sounds from applicant's testimony that that's not going to be a good idea. I don't.
That also was based on a plan for a three dwelling unit building with, I believe, five parking spaces, six parking spaces.
Ah, interesting.
Mr. Chappell?
Well, I'm just saying that if it were possible to settle this in the Solomonic way that Ms. McLennan has suggested, that I'd applaud what she said in the beginning and that even if you move two toward the front, that is, to the southwest corner, and left one, that that would be a lot better. And I adopt my neighbor's language that what we're talking here is the impact of what we're looking at at the moment on a completely residential backyard.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Tretto for a moment to find out if we have a definition of family yet. I feel like I'm, like, on the news or something.
We do. It's a pretty extensive definition. There are three, A, B, C, D. There are four different definitions to family. One or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption, living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. Two unrelated persons and their children living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. A group of not more than three unrelated persons living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. And last but not least, a group of two or more persons containing within it one or more families is defined in subsection, is defined in the first two definitions, including a husband and wife married to one another and their children, as well as adults living together in a dwelling unit as a single housekeeping unit. And management and premises in which the adult occupants are affiliated with a bona fide not-for-profit corporation organized in a variety of ways.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wilmot, do you have anything that you would like to add, say, in summation?
Only that I would remind the board that the, the current owner is looking to create a compromise here. That's why we presented the, the solution that we presented. We don't feel like we're creating a precedent for the city that is detrimental. We think it's a fairly unique situation. The current owner is putting a huge investment into a historic home that nobody seemed to have any interest in. I think the property sat for sale for quite a while before it was picked up, so obviously the owner is looking for a favorable vote this evening so that they can move forward with plans that are already somewhat in progress, in that they have already begun work that was necessary to stabilize the house. They're not looking to prolong the situation any, any further unless it's absolutely necessary.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the record, unless someone on the board has an objection to that, and we will begin our deliberation. I will open it up to general comments before we look at the standards.
I have a general comment. Certainly, I applaud the owner's efforts to fix up a building that nobody is occupying. However, and I don't have the exact wording of the standards for approval or recommendation for a major variation from the ordinance in front of me, but it strikes me that this situation is entirely driven by the new owner's desire to extract additional income from a property, and if the new owner wished to retain the family's status as a single-family residence, the parking problem that is being created would not exist. So both, so the problem is not only created by the owner, but it's created for an improper purpose under, under the standards we're supposed to consider.
Other comments?
Can you just clarify, you know there is an addendum to that. It's not just, it's an either/or, and I don't have the, it's in, it says, see the next table. It's the public benefit clause for that standard? Sorry, number five?
I'm just going off of memory, but it's two, two or more standards that I think are not met, because I don't think that there's a particular hardship. I think that the problem is created by the owner and the owner's desire to, it's a business, the owner is a business. I mean, it's, it wants to add dwelling units so that it can extract more rent from the property. I also don't think that the problem is peculiar to the property itself. So that's just my own, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, I don't believe many, if any, of the standards are, are met.
Do we have the addition to standard number five?
Sure, I could read it. Five, standard number five, A, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the, from the property, or B, while the granting of the variation will result in additional income to the applicant, and while the applicant for the variation may not have demonstrated that the applicant is, application is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. The zoning board of appeals or the city council, depending on final jurisdiction, has found that public benefits to the surrounding neighborhood and to the city as a whole will be derived from approval of the variation that include, but are not limited to any of the standards of section 6363 of this chapter. But I hear what you're saying. If, if you're not, if you're not happy with another one of the standards, that's a little bit of a
I don't think that there's any established public benefit, and I think there's testimony that there's adequate street parking.
I mean, I think you could make an argument that there's public benefit in not having a falling down vacant house sitting there.
Right, or you could also argue that there's public benefit in the person that purchased the property fixing the property up and renting it as a single-family residence as it's currently established.
How many unrelated people could live in that house if it was a single?
You could have a total of six unrelated individuals, three in each unit.
So the current, no, if, if it's not, oh.
If they are unrelated.
No, 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 but if it doesn't go to two-family, if it stays single-family.
If it stays as a single family, it's defined under the same definition, I'm assuming. We don't have different definitions of family based on
Right.
structure. So you would have three unrelated people, a family of a married couple and however many children. It sounded like one of the other benefits was if it were to become some sort of a public facility, or a, some sort of a
Non-profit.
nonprofit facility, taking care of a halfway house, for lack of a better
Right, you could have
or a better example.
More.
You could have more people based on that.
I'd also just add, I think, Mr. Wilmot, with due respect, I'm afraid that this does create a bad precedent. I don't think we should be encouraging property management companies from, to purchase single-family homes in Evanston and try to shoehorn as many potentially students into those as they can by squeezing parking spaces onto existing lots, open parking spaces.
So we're in a situation here, though, the applicant, applicant can't switch to two-family unless they get three parking spaces? Is that pretty much what it boils down to?
Yes. That would be the requirement to make it, if you were to do a two, two living uni, two separate living units requires three parking spaces. So their, their option would be to come and ask for a variation of no parking spaces or two parking spaces or something like that, but that changes what is being requested in this particular application.
I'm inclined to let city council figure this one out.
Well, unfortunately, we can't just punt. And I kind of want to get
We're just, we're just getting, we're, we're running into the whole Northwestern Evanston, who gets to live where, ruh-rah, which is completely ongoing and is really not the purview of the zoning board.
It is not the purview of the zoning board, but at the same time, we have a specific proposal in front of us, and we must determine whether or not it meets certain standards.
I'm inclined to concur with Scott on some standards not being met.
Let me just add, I think there are two alternatives for this property owner. The first one is that they can convert the house as a single-family house, comply with the parking requirements, and rent the house to a single family or to a quote-unquote "family", whether that's three unrelated persons or the other definitions that Mr. Tretto read out loud. The other would be that they could develop the property and sell it as a single-family residence. So to me, again, I come back to, this is, this is a problem that is being created out of a desire to be profitable, and I, I won't, I will not support a recommendation to council on this. I don't think that the standards are met.
I will turn to you and ask you if you have any opinions?
Well, I agree with Scott as well. I think that if this was a single-family home, I think you could get, you know, a family. It would help the, maintain the residential characteristics of the backyard that are adjacent, and the front of it is institutional. I agree, it does not meet the standards.
All right. We still have to go through the standards. I will state sort of for the record that I am sympathetic to, to a number of the issues that have been raised by the neighbors, some of which I think are concerns that we can address and are legitimate zoning issues, others, and, and this is one of those things, I mean, obviously, everyone would like to have a shade tree. Unfortunately, if a shade tree isn't on your property, you don't always get say in what happens with said shade tree. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to that, but also want to state that that does not necessarily weigh into my consideration on this. And I see your disdain for what I am saying, but I'm basing it purely on what we are able to look at as, as, and I, and I understand that. It's, it's similar to people who come to us and want us to protect their view of the lake or something like that. It's not something that we necessarily, we, we can take into consideration, but should not be the driving factor for any of our considerations. But with that, we, we will go through the standards as soon as I get to them. These standards are slightly different than the ones that we went through on the, the Starbucks case before us, because these are for major variation, not for a special use, and so we have a number, I believe there are seven standards that we must find here. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. We have heard a great deal of testimony from some of the neighbors who will be most impacted by this. The neighbor to the west who had sent a letter to us, as well as two neighbors to the north along Orington, who have expressed concern that this, this development, by allowing these three parking spaces, which is what we're kind of looking at here, that is what we have purview over, will have impact on their enjoyment of their backyards. My personal feeling is that it is not a substantial impact. I know somebody else on the board probably will disagree with me, but that's my personal feeling, and I'm going to do these a little bit differently, because I know we may not be in unanimous, all in agreement on this one. So I will ask if anyone has a differing opinion than mine on standard number one. No.
I actually agree. Well articulated.
Thank you. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Again, in looking at what we are tasked with here, which is parking spaces, one of the, one of the main drives on the zoning ordinance is to try to remove cars from public ways and to put them into private parking spaces on the property, whether that be off an alley in a garage, and a parking pad, not in a front yard. But I believe that the requested variation, as it stands before us, is an, is an intent with the zoning ordinance. Again, I will ask if anyone has a differing opinion. Hearing none. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, while this property is not 100% unique in the city of Evanston, I will note that it does not have any rear access. It is one of these, those odd properties that does not have an alley creating a space for parking to come in off that way. There is already a curb cut in Emerson Street. It makes sense that any parking that would be provided would be coming off of, of Emerson, and so I believe that while there are some unique circumstances to this, the area in which parking is being proposed is the area in which parking makes the most sense on this particular property. So I believe standard number three has been met.
I disagree that this standard has been met, notwithstanding the fact that there's no alley access. What we're not, we're not talking about where cars pull in, we're talking about where they end up, and I don't think there's anything unique about this property that, that is causing the problem.
Anyone else? Standard number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Again, based on the uniqueness of this property and the little amount of space that is provided, it would make the most sense to put a garage. That's what most people would prefer. Unfortunately, we do have a tree, which we are trying to protect from damage, and therefore, I believe, again, that, that putting parking spaces in this area makes the most sense. I do not necessarily agree that three parking spaces make the most sense here, so I would have to state that I do not believe that this is a, a particular hardship or a practical difficulty. I believe it's more of an inconvenience because of the fact that the property is being looked at as development, as a too, too flat, away from a single-family home. So I don't believe standard number four has been met.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Standard number five, A, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, or B, we had mentioned the public benefit standard, which also is addressed. If indeed we feel that, that the purpose is to extract income, we must find some public benefit that is being borne out to allow the developer, the owner, applicant, to, to create a source of additional income for themselves, in the fact that the public is in some way benefiting. I do not believe this standard has been met. This is the, the one that I have the most problem with, in the simple fact that this is a single-family home. It's currently a three-bedroom home, which I believe is a perfectly feasible property to find in Evanston, particularly in this area. I know it gets a little dicey when we move around the university, because we have transitional zones, where we have some large Victorian homes, single-family homes on large lots that butt right up against institutional buildings, but I believe that the, the necessity of the three parking spaces really is driven exclusively from the desire to make this a two-family home and not maintain it as a single-family home. So I do not believe that standard five has been met, and whereas I do see the additional extraction of income, I do not see any public benefit coming from the additional income that's being, that's being generated by this property. Everyone else?
I agree.
I agree. Yeah, I have to agree.
Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Again, this is one of those areas that we've discussed. The property, if it were to be restored and developed as a single-family home, would not require any additional parking beyond the two parking spaces, which I feel could fit quite easily on the property. Plus, with the property being viewed as a single-family home, the fact that you would have multiple cars in a single driveway would make more sense in terms of people being able to move cars, get around. The fact that a third parking space is needed is being created basically by the owner's desire to make this a multi-unit dwelling and therefore requiring additional parking. So I do not believe standard six has been met.
I agree.
I agree. Yes.
And standard number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals. This is a little bit of a strange area. We've looked at where are other opportunities to place parking. There was discussion about being able to place parking along the west side of the building, which would require the removal probably of at least one tree that is in that space, as well as moving the, the parking spaces further towards Emerson Street, which we know preservation would not necessarily like, and we do try to take their concerns to mind when we, when we are making our decisions. But I believe that the, the least deviation is literally to maintain this as a single-family home and therefore not require any additional parking spaces. So I don't believe not require any additional parking spaces. So I don't believe standard number seven has been met.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
So with that, we have walked through the standards. I will ask if there is a recommendation to city council in regard to 711 Emerson Street.
Before you make the motion, I would ask that we put in our recommendation that if the city council, for whatever reason, decides to not go along with our recommendation, that they do consider, I don't know, overruling preservation and, and moving those parking places south?
I think you can make that recommendation. Also, city council will be aware of what discussions we've had.
Well, that's true.
And city council does have the ability to override anyone that's seen this so far, including us. So with that, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I think at least among the four of us, we're unanimous that all of the standards are not met, even though we may disagree as to which ones by straw poll.
Correct.
So I move in the matter of 711 Emerson Street, 14 ZMJV-0005, that we recommend that city council deny the request for major zoning relief requested.
It is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Therefore, it will move to city council with a recommendation of denial by the zoning board. City council is the determining body in this, so they are able to make any decision. They can take what we've heard and what we've said and use it how they want. So the project is, is not, not dead. It is still alive. And you can work with Melissa on when you will get before city council. So I'll let you to work that out at a later date. Thank you. And thank you to everyone who came out and spoke this evening.
Somebody's got to speak for the trees.
Yes.
Where's the Lorax when you need him?
With that, we have two more items on the agenda this evening, both special uses for restaurants. The first one is 726 Clark Street. I will ask that that be read into the record. And as people are exiting, if they could please be as quiet as possible so we can hear anything that's going on. Thank you.
Min Sheng Chen Lisi and Stephen Smutney, architect, apply for a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, Kung Fu Tea, at 726 Clark Street. 726 Clark Street is located in the D2 downtown retail core district, which requires a special use permit for type-two restaurants to operate. Zoning code section 61134. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include special use applications submitted March 4, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated July 31, 1980, site plans, business, description of business, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map, and spark draft meeting minutes of March 19, 2014.
Thank you. The applicant and architect are here. If I could ask you to be sworn, as well as anybody else who might be speaking to, to us tonight on this matter, do you swear or affirm, tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. If you could please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Stephen Smutney. Address 1006 South Michigan Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
My name is Min Sen Chen. Also, you can call me Kenny Chen.
Thank you. Mr. Smutney, if you would like to tell us about the project?
It's a 720, excuse me, 762 square foot existing retail space that my client would like to open a specialty tea shop in. We have previously indicated the hours of operation from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. After discussion with my client, he would like to ask on Friday and Saturday that the closing hour be extended until midnight. There'll be approximately three employees per shift. There are no on-street, excuse me, no onsite parking available. He has not rented any parking spaces. Deliveries will be made once a week to the site in a city box truck via the alley. It's anticipated that 70 to 80% of the customers will take out their beverages from the store. There will be four, approximately four seats inside the store. Prepackaged food items will be served along with the beverages, and those will be made off-site and brought to the space. Delivery will not be offered. No loading zone is being requested, or in the client's opinion, required at this location. Existing signage will be changed, and the exterior signage will be channel littering signage. There'll be no changes to the exterior of the building. All improvements will be in the interior of the building, with the exception of the new signage. Client anticipates trash pickup twice weekly. There is space in the back on the property for garbage pickup. Are there any questions?
A couple of questions, the typical ones that we ask in this type of a situation. How many employees will be in the store at any one time?
Three employees.
And that is per shift?
Correct.
Okay. There will be no food that is being prepared onsite? Everything will be prepared elsewhere and brought in?
Correct. All the prepackaged food items. The only thing that will be prepared onsite are the teas.
And everything that you will have onsite in terms of dishware, cups will be disposable? There won't be any sort of a dishwashing facility?
Correct. The only dishwashing that would occur would be for items that are behind the counter. So no customer items would be dishwashed.
Okay. And have you read and are aware of the city's litter collection plan? And we're not asking you to go into the street.
Both the applicant and I are aware of that and have read it.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the board?
Just, just a minute.
All right.
So this is a tea shop, and you want it to be open until midnight?
Correct. On Friday and Saturday. Just to give the students another local, an option to come and sit.
There are other businesses on that same street open until midnight as well?
I do not know that. I'm not sure if that's the case.
It is, it is in the D3 downtown core, and quite often we are, we have businesses down there that are open until midnight. I believe a couple of them, we even have open a little bit later than that. So I don't think midnight would be a, a problem.
Mr. Chen, are you amenable to procuring parking for employees that drive to work that's separate from the metered spaces in front of that strip on, on Clark Street?
So if the employees drive, do you want them to rent a parking space, or will they take public transit? Or there's a, there's a garage one block away? My client indicates that employees will either take public transit, since there is public transit serving that location. If they do drive, they'd be asked to park in the parking garage that's located a block and a half away.
That's the Maple Street garage?
I believe that's correct.
I'm sorry if you already answered this question, but what was in the space before? It was a retail establishment, but?
I believe it was a bank outlet.
It was First Northern Credit Union.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you just repeat what the, the hours of operation would be? I definitely remember hearing midnight on the weekend, but I, can you just go over it all again?
Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to midnight. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That may not be the actual hours that he operates, but those are the requested hours that he chose to utilize to 12:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday.
Is that consistent with that? The Burger King is there and Clark?
I think we actually allow opening earlier. So if we were to put hours on, I would probably allow an earlier opening time in terms of the closing time that is typical for a lot of what we find in the D3 district, that is a, a restaurant or a food service establishment. Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to us on this matter? Seeing no hands. Is there anything you'd like to say to us in summation?
My client's very excited about opening his location down here. Looks forward to prosperous business in Evanston.
Thank you.
I'm actually--
I do have--
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'm just curious about if you could just, this purely for my own curiosity, but if you could just expand a little bit on what you mean by specialty tea, like different varietals or--
It would be imported tea, primarily from the Hong Kong area. And it would be offered both, I believe--
Teas offered both hot and cold?
Teas offered both hot and cold as well.
Okay. Thanks.
One question I had that I forgot to ask. Does Mr. Chen have any other businesses of a similar quality? Is this his first one?
He's currently opening a similar concept in Chicago. It is not open yet. It's under construction, but he has operated many restaurants previously.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I think we will go ahead and close the record and begin our deliberations. I think that this is the type of businesses that we really like to see coming into Evanston, something that is a slightly unique twist on, I mean, obviously, we could, we could have just a typical restaurant come in, but something that is a specialty tea shop is a little bit different, would have the ability to draw people into the downtown specifically for this. And it's, it is a small space, so again, I don't know that it could be developed into anything too grand. But the fact that, that it will have most of its business being takeout and have, have a few small places to sit in the property, on the property, if someone wanted to sit down and have a, have a tea. So I think this is a great use of the space. And, and really sort of rounds out, like I said, kind of a unique area in downtown Evanston.
I agree.
Somebody say something while I'm looking for the standards.
I'm sorry. I nodded. Sorry. Sure. Yes.
Okay.
Well said, Matt. You are all-knowing.
Thank you. So with that, again, we have, the standards that we must find are met. These again being the special use standards, not similar to the ones that we just went through for the residential. Number one, the requested special use is on the list of special uses listed in the zoning ordinance. This being a type-two restaurant and being located in the downtown retail core district, we find that this is the type of, of business that city planners would expect to, to have go into this type of a location. So standard number one is met. Number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. Obviously, we, we look forward to generating businesses, redeveloping businesses in the downtown areas, not having empty storefronts, and again, bringing in unique type opportunities, which I believe this is, so standard number two is met. Number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood. Again, this being the retail core downtown area, we expect to see a slightly higher concentration of commercial businesses, and the city has planned for that. And so I do not believe that this, this tea shop will actually in any way impact negatively the downtown area. So standard number three is met. Number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Again, this being our downtown area, this is exactly the type of business we would expect to see go in there. And therefore, we do not expect it to have any negative effect on the property values, but actually by bringing in a business and a hopefully successful business, it will increase property values for the entire neighborhood. So standard number four is met. Number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. Again, city has arranged for the downtown area to have the heaviest impact on our facilities and services. And therefore, this type of a, a business going in will, will be served by those facilities and services. So standard number five has been met. Number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. Again, a lot of this business will probably be people walking by on their way to and from other places, students coming by specifically for this, as well as hopefully some other people seeking this out as a destination. And because of the fact that we have a large parking garage, a couple of large parking garages in the immediate area, traffic should not be a large problem. So standard number six is met. Number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. This, this particular location, I don't believe has any specific natural or, or, I'm sorry, any historical or architectural resources that are in, have immediate concern. The fact that the exterior of the building is not going to be changed means that, with the exception of signage, very few people should even notice a difference to the block. Number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. I don't know that this standard particularly applies in the downtown area. So I would say that it has been met. And number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and applicable ordinances by the city. So again, as I mentioned before, this being a food service type establishment, it would fall under several regulations that are not purview of this board. But I have no reason to believe that the owner would not get the necessary licenses to operate this business. So I believe standard number nine has been met. Does everyone agree with my findings on the standards?
Yes.
Yes.
I do.
With that, I will ask if there is a motion?
Let me try. In the case of 14ZMJV-0016, application for a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, the zoning board of appeal makes a recommendation to city council to approve the variance, a special use permit.
We also would usually include hours of operation, which would be 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 midnight on all days of the week. Again, you don't have to stay open that late. We would just give those to you. And with particular adherence to the litter collection plan and garbage pickup plans by the city, and that the development be in substantial compliance with the testimony and documents submitted herein.
Okay. Just data that we also add, that employees will be instructed to utilize the parking structure rather than the metered parking in front of the, in front of the business?
Yes. So with that, kind of motion made by everyone, but we'll give credit to Vialletto for that. Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved and seconded, that we recommend approval of a type-two restaurant for 726 Clark Street with the conditions set forth. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. With that, it will go to city council with a recommendation for approval. And again, you can coordinate with Melissa when you will be for council. We have one last case this evening, which is for 1701 Simpson Street. I'm assuming the gentleman is the applicant in the back there. And so I will ask Melissa to please read that into the record.
Sebastian Cozura Lisi applies for a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, Frio Gelato, at 1701 Simpson Street. 1701 Simpson Street is located in the B1 Business 1701 Simpson Street is located in the B1 Business District, which requires a special use permit for type-two restaurants to operate. Zoning Code Section 6923. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include special use application submitted March 4, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey, site plans, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map, and spark meeting minutes of March 12, 2014.
Thank you. If I could ask you to raise your hand and be sworn, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sebastian Cosura. I live in 2714 Rees in Evanston.
Thank you. And if you would please tell us about the project you have proposed for Simpson Street.
We started with wholesale gelato business at the property. And we are currently making the gelato there, but we are selling to restaurants and different fast-food restaurants in the city and someplace else. But we thought it was a good idea, since we already have some people there working, it was a good idea to sell to the public, especially because we have some specialty flavors from Argentina that we are not selling in places, in the places that we already have. So people were asking... We are selling to restaurants, and then people are asking where they can buy the specialty flavors. So we thought it was a good idea to start selling to the public directly in that location.
So what are your proposed modifications to the building in order to make it a retail establishment as opposed to a wholesaler?
None.
So how will people... Are people currently able to come into your wholesale establishment?
No.
So you are... Basically, what I'm looking at is you're looking at putting a display counter? So people will come in, order from the freezers that they're able to see like a typical ice cream shop?
Right. We're gonna have two displays, two display freezers. And they have seven flavors each. That plus a register to charge people.
And do you plan on having any seating?
No.
In the place? So everything will be... It'll be 100% takeout? And how...
Sorry, go ahead. Is it... Are you gonna sell single serving? Or are you just gonna sell packages like pints or quarts or...
Both.
Both?
Both.
So the typical questions that we ask you've been here, you've heard a lot of these already. How many employees do you expect to have working?
One or two per shift.
And is that in addition to what you currently have working?
Yes.
In the facility? So you'll be increasing it by one or two people?
It's very hard for me to see it, to know how much gelato we're gonna sell in there. I hope I can... You know, I need to have like five people serving. It seems like it's gonna be like either one or two people operation for selling gelato there, plus there is one person once or twice a week manufacturing the gelato.
Can you describe where... Where do you expect your customers to park?
On the street. Street parking. There's plenty of street parking in the area.
I would say because of the nature of the business where it's kind of an in and out, that's why I was wondering if there would be any seating within the facility, in the building. That parking should turn over pretty quickly for anybody that is parking on the street.
So you don't anticipate anybody eating on the premises, like out front, sitting like that?
Well, if I sell a pint to somebody and then they go outside and then they start eating in there, there's something that I have no control on. But my idea is to sell to go. I, you know, I don't expect people to stay inside the building eating the gelato there. There's no room for that.
So the pint is the smallest you sell, like not cups or cones or anything like that?
We're gonna sell cups. Cups. Smaller... We call it a single serve. So basically, it's half a pint.
And what are the hours of operation that you're proposing?
We're gonna open at 3:00 PM, and we're gonna close at 8:30 PM.
And that's seven days a week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the city has shared with you, you've heard about the litter collection plan that you're responsible for any litter within 250 feet?
We are already doing that. We collect probably two bags of trash a week in there. So we already have a little plan.
All right.
Working.
And the only reason I raise that is because somebody in the neighborhood had just raised a concern about the amount of litter. So... But it doesn't sound like a lot of the stuff that you are going to be selling, since it's not meant to be consumed right there.
Concern of our litter on the street right now?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So...
It's my concern too.
Right.
And I, you know, in the back of this property, I have a fenced yard, big fenced yard. And then the trash goes into my property, and I have to collect trash all the time. But that's how it is, I guess.
From where? The building in back of it?
Well, it's like plastic blowing and then getting into my property. But the whole neighborhood is like that.
Yeah, it is.
And because of the fact that you're already producing on-site, I'm assuming deliveries will be about the same number that they are now.
Well, right now, we don't have any deliveries to... Direct to clients. Basically, right now, we are delivering to restaurants. And we just started in October, so right now, the operation is pretty small.
But I'm saying like people, your suppliers who are coming to you, you are not anticipating...
I have no suppliers coming to me. I go and get all my supplies.
All right.
Myself. We are very small. Nobody's interested in selling anything to us.
Okay.
Right now.
Hopefully, we'll change that.
Hopefully, we will.
Are there any additional questions?
Oh, I have another, just pure curiosity question. Tell me, what do you mean by special Argentinian flavors that don't necessarily get sold in the restaurants?
What kind of flavors you're asking? One of the most typical in Argentina is called Gelbamate, which is like a tea that they drink with a straw. Maybe you've seen it. And it's a very bitter flavor.
Wait, Urbamate?
Yeah.
Gelato?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay.
And I have a lot of Argentinians, Argentinean that I know that they wanna come and buy it. But there is not something that I can sell in Neighborhood Grill where we are selling a lot of vanilla or strawberry or something like that.
Okay. Any other ones? That's very interesting.
We have Egg Caster Marsala Wine that is very popular also within Argentinians.
Okay.
But there are a lot of people who really like that flavor.
I think I like that flavor.
You can go to our website, friogelato.com, and see all the flavors there.
Okay, great. All right, no more.
Are there any other questions about the matter at hand and not personal flavors? With that, I will note that there is no one else in the room who is going to speak to us. So is there anything you would like to say in conclusion?
No, I'm looking forward to open and to be successful and bring something nice to the neighborhood and bring another business to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will go ahead and close our record and begin our deliberation. As I mentioned before in the previous one, where it was nice to see sort of a unique business coming into Evanston that you don't find on every street corner, this one, I think, is even more unique than the last. The fact that it is being sold in restaurants currently and people are sort of requesting, where can I get this? Will hopefully make this a destination point for people who are seeking out, be it just a good gelato with a fairly standard flavor or something that is a little more exotic. And definitely, I think it's a nice extension of a business that's kind of already there to just sort of open up the front door and say, if you're interested in buying a single serving or a pint to take home, you can stop by and do that. So I think it's a great idea.
I agree.
Yeah, I totally agree.
So with that...
I'm sorry, just one thing just occurred to me.
Yes.
I don't know whether the litter collection plan covers, and I bet it doesn't, the Foster Park Field right across the street. But I wonder whether we could add a condition about the placement of refuse containers on the premises to try to avoid some litter in the park, on the baseball fields there.
We also can recommend trash cans into the park.
Yeah, that too.
What they want.
That too.
And I would be much more open to that than trying to extend a starting business into having to patrol a much greater area.
No, no, no. I guess what I was getting at was perhaps if there were bins on-site, that he wouldn't have to patrol a greater area that people would throw their things out on-site.
Right.
But your suggestion's even better.
Thank you. With that, again, we do have the special use standards that we have to go through to give City Council sort of where our thinking is. So we will go through those one last time this evening. And beginning with number one, the requested special use is on the list of special uses listed in the zoning ordinance. This being a B1 Business District, we do find that a type-two restaurant is one of the approved uses. So the standard has been met. Number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance. Again, this being a business district, we're only expect to find a smaller business being located on these streets. And the fact that a business already exists there but is looking to expand to do retail sales out of an existing wholesale seems very much in keeping with what the Comprehensive General Plan states. So that's been met. Number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood. Again, with the exception of any litter, which seems to be being addressed through a number of different areas, the property owner or the applicant is already making a very concerted effort to keep the neighborhood clean. I do not anticipate litter being an additional problem here, which is the only negative effect that I could possibly see coming with this business. I see far more positive aspects to this than any negative. So I believe standard number three is met. Number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Again, the fact that this is becoming a storefront that is open to the public to come in and make purchases of gelatos seems very much to help bring up property values. It puts people on the street and makes this somewhat of a destination in the city, hopefully. So standard number four has been met. Number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. The fact that we are looking at including some sort of a sale to the public from a facility that already is making gelatos, I don't believe we're going to see any large impact coming here. So I believe standard number five is met. Number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. As we discussed, there seems to be plenty of parking in the area. And this not being a place where people will come and spend a long period of time, but more of a coming in to make a purchase and then being on their way, I don't predict that there's going to be any large traffic impact in the neighborhood by this business. So that standard is met. Number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. This building has no significant historical or architectural significance that I'm aware of. So I believe that standard has been met. Again, we don't predict any major changes to the outside of the building at all. Number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. As I stated before, this really does not seem to be making any change to the exterior of the building. And therefore, that standard has been met. And number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. As with most food service establishments that we've mentioned tonight, there probably will be some additional licensing that will be required because of the resale of this to the public. I'm not even 100% sure of that. But I have no reason to believe that the owner would not get whatever certificates or applications are needed to be done in order to meet that. With that, is there a motion? Before we make the motion, I would say that although the owner is only asking for a 3:00 PM to an 8:30 PM seven days a week, we may want to look at expanding those hours so that if in the future he becomes wildly successful and decides that gelato for noon is the thing to do or if there is some Argentinian tradition of gelato at 10:00 in the morning, that we want to make arrangements for that as well.
I agree.
Should we say 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM in that neighborhood? Or what's the...
I would have no problem with that. I mean, it is bordered by a couple of residential districts, but they tend to be more dense residential districts.
I wanna say something. There is no way I'm gonna open in the morning.
That's fine, that's fine. We don't... This is just, we're giving you the widest berth that we can.
I think if you wanna give me the widest, it's like from noon to 10:00 PM. That will be absolutely the widest. Nobody eats gelato in the morning. So it doesn't make any sense for me to have...
I would if it was available.
I won't sell it to you.
Even with that statement being said, I would say we probably would go a 10 to 10. Just as a nice compromise. And again, that gives leeway in case, for some reason, lots of people want gelato in the morning. So with that, is there a motion from one of the board members, please?
Sure. I'll move in the matter 14ZMJV-0014 regarding the property at 1701 Simpson Street that the board recommend that City Council grant the special use requested on the following conditions: that the hours of operation be limited from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM; that the applicant comply with the city's litter collection and garbage removal plans; and that the property be developed and used consistent with the testimony and documents on record.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. With that, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With four ayes and no one opposed, it will move to City Council with a recommendation for approval. Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we have moved through the items on our agenda for this evening. There is one topic of discussion.
I'm just looking forward to our next ZBA hearing on April 15. That does fall on a religious holiday for some. We do have a full agenda of the members here. Do people think that they will be present?
It's the second night of Passover.
Ah, okay.
I expect to be present. I don't know who else it impacts. Clara Weinberg, it might, but I expect to be here.
As long as we have a quorum, I would prefer to go ahead and meet and allow those people who want to take it off for religious reasons to... And I would say that all of those of us who are not the chosen people probably should choose to be here.
Okay.
How is that for a...
All right. What's... Tell me the date again. What is it? It's the one that's two weeks from here, from now? Yeah, okay.
Tax day.
Ooh.
Yeah.
So with that, we will meet on the 15th. And again, if people need to take that off for religious observances, we certainly understand. But because of the amount of cases that we have moving forward, I would prefer to keep us on track. Any other issues? Hearing none, we stand adjourned until our meeting on the 15th.